of August, but but moving so that we could still have an in-person graduation. Is clearly an option. Again, a lot of that is just gonna is gonna depend on what our health department officials are telling us and what the experts are saying and what they will allow. Actually, you know, right now, we're still under the no more than five individuals gathering and still with the appropriate physical distance. So I want I just wanted to let you know that we're looking at all types of celebrations at the end of the year because it's it's certainly certainly graduation for our seniors is a is the big one, but we do have other students that we're concerned about and that we'd like to take care of as well. So all of those things are in the thought process and we're going to continue to work on that and see what sorts of creative ideas we have and what we can do for our students to make sure that we can have some some closure to the end of the school year and and bring some attention to some of these really critical milestones for our kids.
Well, I think that will be one. Need that and I appreciate. And I know we all appreciate whatever can be done for the kids. So thank you, Mr. Canella. Any questions of the superintendent before I move on?
Yeah, this is James.
I'm sorry to say somebody's hand up, but I can't see.
Yeah.
Mr. Chanel. James has a question.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, James, question?
Yeah, so I have a question for Tim on that. Has anybody at the state level thought or said anything about that recently regarding graduation or potentially easing restrictions specifically for these types of events yet?
Yeah, when we we discussed it on on Tuesday, the because there are lots of different ideas out there, right? The commissioner was very, very supportive. And basically, he said, let us know if you if you want to delay your graduation. In other words, you want to move it out because that's going to give you a better chance of having an in, you know, an in-person graduation instead of a virtual graduate graduation ceremony. That he and members of the State Department of Education were very supportive of that, and they would work with us with the Department of Public Health at the state level to try to make that happen. So they really, really, really want to work with us. But there are there are differences across the state. So for example, right now in Hartford County, we have a, you know, a high number of cases, etc. If you if you go out to Eastern Connecticut, one of the folks who was on the line the other day was in Chaplain, Connecticut, which is tiny. And their their curve, you know, we've all seen the the curves is is really flat right now. So it's going to be different for Chaplain, Connecticut and places in Eastern Connecticut in at the end of June, the beginning of July than it is for us. So the so the restrictions are going to be different. But to answer your question, they're really, really, really hopeful and more than willing to work with us. We have had wonderful communications with Shane Lockwood, who is our local health director. He's just been he's been a great resource and been really accommodating and tried to help us work through all of this. And anything that we're doing, whether it's having people come into buildings or look at a schedule for, you know, getting something done, we bring it to Shane and he gives us his input. And ultimately, if he said it's okay to do it, you know, we do it. And he's been literally right on the money with all of his predictions right from the very beginning. So we'll continue to do that and we'll work, you know, we'll work closely with our local health department, with the State Department of Education and with the Department of Public Health. They're very, very aware of it. In fact, the commissioner last week or two weeks ago was the one who urged everyone to begin having, you know, conversations with our seniors. He literally had, I don't know if it was a Zoom call or whether it was Google meets with some seniors from around the state who who told him they very, 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 very much want to have some type of a graduation ceremony. And and I think that really struck him. And consequently, he said, you know, we'll help you, we'll we'll work with you to the very best of our ability. So I was really encouraged by that. Sorry, that was a long. Yeah, that was a long response to what was a short question. I apologize.
No, but good to hear because it's what the children deserve. And and I think all of us on the board would like to see something. Dave, do I see your hand up, Dave Favel?
I have a question. David Favel here. I know you mentioned, Tim, that there was going to be a meeting this upcoming Monday. But I was wondering if there was a way we could have an open forum where the public can provide some suggestions for some alternatives to end of the year celebrations. Is there a way we could set that up like through either Google meets or a Zoom?
Well, we've had some suggestions already. I mean, the short answer is sure. We've had but we've had some suggestions. The meeting I referred to was with staff members at the high school, you know, the administrative team, myself, Ms. Madancy. So that's that's the meeting I was talking about. I'm not sure, you know, people have lots of ideas. What I want to avoid, quite frankly, is having the tableau rasa. Because you throw a million ideas out on the table, you're gonna say, gee, we can't do 900,000. And I don't want our students to be disappointed. I want us to talk about things that are realistic, things that things that we can realistically do. We have an incredibly talented professional team at the high school who's done this numerous, numerous, numerous times. No one else has. So I think, you know, we're always open to ideas. People can make all sorts of suggestions, you know, they do. But I think as we as we move forward, we're really going to be guided by what as a professional staff, we know we can do organizationally. And then, of course, you know, as I said earlier, it's really a health department call on how much they'll let us do.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on to communications from our student reps.
All right. Hi, hi, guys. It's Amber. To start off, I was gonna just give a little perspective of how classes are going for me personally. A lot of my teachers have taken different approaches of how they will how they feel is best to teach us all according to how you guys are giving them options. I feel like the best way for me that I was learning is that one of my teachers records her lessons and she has her office hours as well. And she's always, if you have any questions or whatever, you can email her and she'll she responds really quickly as well. I actually like the recorded lessons a lot more because it gives me a lot of like, I can make my own schedule with it. Whereas like, but and as like live classes, obviously, you can have like the in-the-moment questions. So that's just what I was thinking.
So it's working well for you?
Yeah.
So hi, everybody. It's Fred Soder. And before I say anything, I just want to thank all of the administration, the parents, the first responders, medical provider, everybody who's helping during this crisis. It's it's a difficult time. So it is it's a blessing that we have everybody. So for me specifically with with school, I have had only asynchronous lessons where teachers have recorded lessons like for history and posted on Google Classroom so I can listen to it, take notes, and they can expand on what is either being shown on the slides or what's in the textbook. And for office hours for teachers, that has been probably one of the most helpful things that the administration has pushed out. Because the other day, for example, I went to one of my teacher's office hours, and I had a couple problems with a worksheet that we're working on, and I wanted to get clarification. So I knew what I was doing. And of course, this doesn't suffice for being in class, but it is the next best thing. So as of right now, that is all I have to say. So we'll move on to Trevor.
Thank you, Brad.
So I have actually had some of the live lessons with a couple of my teachers, which I do think are also beneficial. The nice part is that all the teachers do record the live lessons with students there if they need it. So that way, students who weren't able to make it to the Google meets or Zoom or whatever they choose to do are able to go back and view it. Again, with the they just lose the benefit of being able to ask questions. However, in our transition from maintenance learning to distance learning, and then to distance learning 2.0, I think that the transition from maintenance learning to distance learning was very hard for a lot of students. And presented a lot of different challenges because it did feel like a lot for all of us to have to self teach a lot of what we're learning and have all of those classes stacked on top of each other. So I think that this distance learning 2.0, from what I've seen the last four days and what I've experienced, has been much better. I have some time to kind of decompress a little bit and I'm not doing work for incredible amount of time, which is nice. And as a student who is in special education and has an IEP, it's the teachers have been incredibly accommodating, which is wonderful and, you know, have understood that not even just me, but everybody is having a hard time with this transition over this experience and have been very flexible in regards to due dates and in regards to work and stuff like that. So it's I'm very grateful about that. And I think on behalf of kind of what Mr. Canella was saying with graduations, stuff like that for seniors, obviously, this is not what our senior class expected. I think that there are a lot of things that more trivial things that I think we're gonna miss. But we are all very hopeful and very optimistic about the future and, you know, being able to once again, see our friends, whether it be in school or over the summer, at some point, sometime, somewhere. And so I personally wanted to say thank you to all of the staff and administration and you guys and the parents who have been working very hard. I know that my parents, there's four of us in one house. My dad runs the IT for a bank, so he has three monitors plus my mom's computer. There's too many devices in this house. So I understand the frustration of having a lot of devices as well. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. And on behalf of the class of 2020, we are very grateful for all the hard work that you guys have done. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Trevor. Very well said. And we will do the best we can for the class of 2020. Thank you. Any other comments from board members to the students? Joseph? Joe, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Carmody. And again, Joe Bazutki, just making a comment for the students. So I know Tim briefly touched on of having a conversation about different options that we might have for graduation. Is there any possibility, and maybe we can talk with our contact at Public Health to sort of get a handle on what a graduation celebration ceremony would look like if we were to like six feet apart, yes, that kind of stuff. But then maybe like more of a I guess, what's the word I'm looking for? Somebody brought to my attention an idea that one school, I think it was out in the Midwest, was essentially using a drive-in. And having all the families in the car and then they were doing something with the students essentially to sort of keep the whole social distancing and mask wearing and that kind of thing. So I think this is an opportunity for us as a town to really shine on this. And I think, you know, Trevor, you know, if you have any suggestions as to how we can get the seniors involved as far as trying to come up with a couple really out of the box ideas, because I'll tell you what, like, you know, we could we could turn this negative into a positive, and there's no reason that we can't have a silver lining. You know, so it's regardless of I think we can figure something out. We're resourceful town.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, like I had said before, and a lot of seniors have kind of felt this way, again, the things that we that we're gonna miss are like not going back to school are kind of like those small things and stuff like that. Like being able to say goodbye to underclassmen or doing college shirts or class prank or whatever, which, I mean, there's nothing we can do about those kinds of things. But we know that, you know, we whether it's in a car in a drive-in, through a computer, or all together on a field, we're gonna have some sort of graduation. Because that honestly is one of the most important things to our class is to have that graduation. Because a lot of things that is, you know, we've worked 13 plus years just to have the four best months of those 13 plus years kind of stripped away from us. And it's like the one thing that, you know, everyone looks forward to. It's like the high school musical moment where, you know, it's the end, you know, this is we've worked hard and this is what this is this is that. So I think that definitely I'm sure that many students will have suggestions and I can try and reach out to them and figure out what they can offer.
No, we feel the same way, Trevor. So rest assured that whatever can be done within the perimeter of what the government tells us to do, we'll do. Okay? Any other comments from board members? All right, moving on, we'll go to Mr. O'Shanna for the Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. This is A. O'Shanna. So we had a meeting on Monday this past week for the committee. We started off with reviewing the self-insurance report. Through February, the Board of Education claims are $896,000 under budget, which is a is a nice thing to hear. And Sherry had just received the numbers for March. March came in another 13,000 under budget. So claims are running very very positively at this point, which is a good thing. We moved on to transfer funds. The athletic director, Mr. Rissler, put in a transfer of funds to draw funds for uniforms and equipment. And basically, what this is, is just taking the funds from one account and moving them into the account that they should be in for when those those funds are drawn out. So it's actually just a an update of accounts. So with that, does anybody have any questions about that? If not, I'd like to make
I don't see any, Mr. O'Shanna.
A move to approve the transfer of funds is submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So moves?
Okay, the next item, we moved on to the HQ contract extension. We discussed this item at our last Board of Education meeting. And the administration went back and worked with HQ on finalizing the contract extension. The extension includes an item where as part of our commission's or committee's discussion, in the spring of 2022, there's going to be a review of the organic recycling program to decide if it's a program we want to continue moving forward with. So we have an opportunity to take a second look at that, see how it's working. During that process, they were also able to negotiate a reduction in the overall recycling rate that was originally proposed. So that's another positive, positive thing. Does anybody have any questions about the HQ recycling update? I know that was in the report?
I don't see any, Mr. O'Shanna.
Yeah. So so Zaya, not so much with the new contract, but I guess just a side note that's sort of triggering me is with an idea. So Sherry, out of curiosity, what do we tend to do because school isn't in traditional session, so to speak, and we're not generating trash as a level that we normally do when schools in session? Have we had any discussion with HQ as far as helping to reduce the cost of the school system?
So I haven't had conversations specifically with them. However, I am working in general with legal counsel on a number of contracts. Again, Mr. Canella referred earlier to the executive order, which essentially is telling districts that they need to continue paying on a number of contracts that we have. So for us, that includes things like the custodial contracts that we have at some of our schools, things like the athletic training contract, the HQ contract. So they're reviewing contracts on our behalf and trying to determine in regards to making sure we still comply with the executive order, what we need to do.
Okay. I guess my only thought is because HQ is a local company, that it we may be able to have a realistic conversation with them, just the same way with the busing company is, you know, again, like, these are companies that are sharing the burden of everything that's going on with us. So I mean, I would assume that we'd be able to have a little bit of movement with that. I would hope. I don't know, maybe I'm just living in my own little world.
Well, I don't want to confuse the two because there are some some hefty requirements depending on the contract of the executive order. And so if you just looked at the transportation contract alone, there is an expectation that the companies are keeping their drivers on their payroll as well as continuing the benefits, continuing their overheads, for example, of renting the facility where the buses are kept, the maintenance that they still need to do and paying on their fleet. So all of those things are being considered in the governor's order. So other than, you know, fuel savings and potentially cutting into their profit margin, that's really what's left on the table to try to negotiate with these companies. So it has made it very difficult. The transportation companies statewide are are all working together as well, trying to get better clarification from the State Department of Ed and the governor's office in regards to the executive order. They think it's very unfair that every district is being left out there individually to negotiate those rates and gather the information that's required under the current executive order. So you have, you know, and there's so many different vendors. So right now, there's a very small percentage difference of where people are looking to negotiate. But to my understanding, there's a limited number of districts that have actually negotiated a change in their contract right now. Everyone really is is like Suddington, still in that negotiation process.
Okay. And so sorry, sorry to defer is just again
No, that's okay. It helps for our future. You saved me from talking about some of this later. So thank you.
Update. Yes, that's coming. Any other questions? If not, I'd like to move to approve the five-year contract extension with HQ Dumpster and Recycling is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. The next item on the agenda was the three-year custodial contract award for Darrenoski Elementary School. We received six bids and the recommendation from the through these bidding is to go with Champion, who is actually the second lowest bidder. Low bidder came in with a staffing proposal that based on their staffing proposal didn't meet expectations set by administration for the level of service that was needed to actually get the work done. So as part of the motion we'll make here, if school does not reopen for this year, we are not going to award the summer 2020 custodial service because our in-house staff is going to be able to handle that work with the extended amount of time. And it will actually reduce the overall cost by $18,396. Any question? Again, this was in the report. Any questions on this contract? See none. I'd like to move to award bid 2020-02 contracted custodial services to Champion for three years, excluding the summer of 2020, if school does not reopen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is award of custodial contract services for the high school's summer cleaning. We received four bids and recommend going with the low bidder, SMG. Similar to the last item, if school doesn't reopen for this school year, the motion will be to award only year two and three of this bid, as our internal staff will be able to perform the services this summer with the extended amount of time. And that's going to save over $50,000 from next year's budget. Any questions? Okay, with not, I move to award bid 2020-01 contracted summer custodial services to SMG Services Management Group LLC, excluding year one, the summer of 2020, if school does not reopen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any?
All right. Next, we discuss the JFK and JAD Middle School contracted custodial services for a three-year extension. Excuse me. The board had previously allowed administration to negotiate a three-year extension with the current vendor. A three-year agreement with a total increase of $68,828 was reached for each school. And again, similar to the last couple of items, if school does not reopen, we'd recommend awarding the three-year extension to both schools, but removing summer of 2020, reducing the cost by $14,100. Any questions? It's a lot easier to see everybody when you're like right there. So if there are no questions. Bob?
Brown? Yeah, this idea of exclude, Bob Brown, of excluding the summer that that then they have other things they normally would have done. We could still get that stuff done?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So because we would anticipate word on whether or not school is going to be reopening within the next month, that's going to allow that, first of all, the custodians are currently working. They're all working full schedules now. So they're able to start addressing a number of things they'd be doing in the summer. And then we would plan on working with our staff to come in over the next couple of weeks on some type of a staggered schedule to clean out individual classrooms. So that the our current custodians will be able to get a jumpstart on all of those those summer projects as well as getting the summer cleaning done.
Thank you.
Trevor, you have your hand up?
Yes, I was wondering, are will there be an opportunity if school does not reopen for students to go back to the school on scheduled times and grab any things that they might have left? Because a lot of us were under the impression on March 13th that we were going to be going back to school.
Yeah.
So like, I know that I have stuff there that I'd like to get at some point, but I don't know if that was discussed at all.
Mr. Canella, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, can I? I'll give the short answer. Mr. Mr. Pepe, obviously, you know, has probably a more specific answer. I'll give you the general answer. Yes, we can we can make sure that happens. We do. Just like we have with staff, we do have to make sure that we have appropriate physical distance. We can't have too many people, you know, in the building. But the building is so large that logistically, we and when I say we, I actually mean Mr. Pepe and the administrative team at the high school can can find a way to to schedule that out, Trevor. Absolutely would want to make sure that students have, you know, their own belongings if there's anything there. Lockers or whatever. I don't know. Mr. Pepe, would you like to weigh in on that at all?
Yes, we will plan accordingly. Right now, because we are doing some cleaning, the custodians are what I call bagging and tagging any locker contents. Those will be brought to a central location. And when we have the all clear from the health department and we can can develop the schedule to bring kids in, I'll meet you there with your stuff. When it comes to the specialty areas, we'll have to look at like the music rooms and instruments and things alike like that, the same type of process.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. O'Shanna?
So so we did that. Okay, so painting, painting bid award for selected areas at the high school. I know when our at our last board meeting on the 27th of February, we talked talked a bit about this and there was a consensus reached that we would set aside an amount of money. The budget right now, it says $100,000 for painting. We talked about a bunch of different numbers, but we put out, we talked about a minimum amount of putting $25,000 aside so that we can go out and get bidding started for painting services to the high school. And it would be the painting would be done in areas where the floors are being redone. So the furniture would have already been moved out of the room. It would have been a lot easier and less costly because furniture already moved out, it's easier to paint, and then the furniture gets moved back in. So with that in mind, the bids went out and a bid came back, actually less than what we had anticipated, $16,370, which is below the consensus amount. So in order to get on the docket for these folks to come in and actually do the painting, scholar painting, I'd like to make a motion to approve funding of $16,370 for painting at Sintin High School in the 2020-2021 budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I, can I just a quick question?
Joe?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
Um, so just a quick question for our administration. Is, is there any benefit in utilizing this time that I don't have in the school to do any other kinds of projects or utilizing staff in a, in a way to be able to maybe do more painting and that aspect of maintenance or, just, just a thought?
Yeah. Okay. Do you mind if I answer that?
Yeah.
Oh. The, the, uh, projects that we're working on, we have custodial staff and we have maintenance staff in the, in the building, working now. And of course, they have to be appropriately spaced, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But in terms of actual painting, we have one painter and he's great at what he does. But, uh, these types of spaces, we specifically need to have contracted out because they're just, they're just these big, big spaces, like library media center. It's a huge space. And in order to coordinate all of that, and make sure that we can have that done and then have the flooring installed, those are the types of projects, you just really have to contract those out. We just simply don't have the people to do it ourselves.
Any other questions on? Is someone got a hand up that I'm not seeing? No? Anybody? Okay, Mr. O'Shaughnessy?
The next item was, uh, it was an item on the agenda about updating the district's purchasing.
Did we do a motion on the painting?
No.
I don't think we voted.
We didn't do a motion on that, Zaya.
There was a motion.
We made a motion.
And there was no vote.
Okay, so we need to vote on the, and all those in favor of the budget for the high school painting?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you voted.
Uh, Terry?
Good.
Terry?
Yes, Linda?
Uh, Zaya made a motion on the, uh, the negotiated custodial contract three-year extension to SMG. There is no second and there is no vote. There was a discussion.
Second.
Okay.
My second.
My third. Okay.
Okay, so now we have, we have the motion, we have the second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You ready to say it, offended?
I'm expeditiously moving us along that way, I guess. Okay. Updating the district's purchasing policies to meet with the towns. A few years back, we made a change on personnel and policy to make one change to our policy to align associated with the local vendors. But now that there's a lot of leveraging going on, or potential leveraging going on between the town and the board, there was a request by administration that we aligned certain bid thresholds. You saw that in, in the package. We had a lot of discussion about that in the meeting. And at this point, what the committee did is felt it was important to have personnel and policy take a look at this and decide if in fact we want to go ahead and align town policy with board policy before any financial decisions are made, to see if that's even something we want to consider doing. So this is going to be brought up at the PMP next meeting and then come back to finance for further discussion after their, their input is, is involved. So no action.
So that will be coming back?
Correct. No action is needed there. All right.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
The next item was the financial update by Mrs. D'Nello. She shared a lot of detailed information with us and I know she started some of that discussion here. And I think this is going to be, uh, if, if we could turn this over to Sheri, there's a lot of items that she's going to need to cover here, a lot of detail too.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Shaughnessy. So I did share a report with the finance committee of projections through March thirty-first. Um, and at that point in time, we were projecting a surplus of approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the major reason for that surplus is the fact that we have close to four hundred thousand dollars of supply items that, um, will, we do not anticipate utilizing due to the closure and also the fact that we hold back the twenty-five percent of the supply line items that you're aware of. What is not included in that projection are some of the things you've been hearing about publicly, like savings for transportation, whether or not, um, salaries and some of the expenses for spring athletics, because we still are waiting to see if they have some portion of a season. But I, you know, I do want the board to know that we are working hard to make sure that we are complying with the executive order. And, um, some of the things that I was trying to explain to the committee is that, um, well, first, let me just talk specifically about transportation, just so you have the context of the dollars we're talking about. So there were sixty days that we did not go to school. We spend approximately twenty thousand dollars, about twenty thousand, five hundred dollars for daily transportation to and from school. Uh, so if you take that times the sixty days, we're talking about one point two million dollars that when we first closed school, we were thinking we potentially would be saving as a district. Obviously, after the governor's executive order, we know that is not the case. And as I said earlier, um, we will be negotiating what is an appropriate payment to New Britain Transportation. Um, I can tell you that, um, from districts that have been willing to share their discussions, I am not aware of a district that has yet been able to settle for less than eighty percent of their contract. So if we were in that ballpark, and you know, I'm not disclosing what we're currently negotiating, I'm just telling you public information of things I'm hearing out there with other districts, um, that would be about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings to our budget. So that dollar amount is not currently included in the surplus. Um, did you have a question, Bob, before I keep going?
No, I just, I, I sure had saved, again, I'm just, this is just hearsay to me, but they had negotiated savings bigger than that, but I don't know.
Was that while, are you referring to the Record Journal article?
No, it was someone who called me. It might have been.
Okay, so there, there was recent articles in the paper and, uh, Mr. Cullen is planning to send out some, uh, the appropriate correspondences to, to not only you, but other elected officials that are asking after reading some information in the paper. Um, and those were, um, dollar amounts that were being expressed for surpluses prior to including the payment that they would be making for transportation. So I believe those, it was a misrepresentation in that article. Um, in addition to that, um, we are looking at, um, our special education costs. There is an expectation that those students that were outplaced, although they may not be attending school, that we're still required to pay those schools. Uh, they're paying their staff for distance learning, just like they're paying our staff. Um, and the only potential savings there would be on students that may have a one-to-one para educator at those outplacement facilities. Um, but really where the discussion that I think is very important for the board to understand is that our high-cost special education students are already at a threshold where we'd be receiving excess cost reimbursement for. And the district informs the state of what those estimated costs are in December and again in March. So those reports were filed prior to the school closure. Uh, we do not have an opportunity to make changes on those reports until August. After all the payments have been made, we file a report for September first to the State Department of Ed. And then that information is audited in the fall, when the auditors come on site to both the town and the Board of Education. It is, um, it's highly likely that, um, some of those costs obviously may be reduced for things like the one-to-one para or a negotiated settlement with an MBT contract, for example. Um, and therefore, we would have already received the excess cost payments based on those December and March reports. And the way the state handles any adjustments to the excess cost, and that grant comes directly to the board, the way the state handles any adjustments based on the audit and final report is they make an adjustment to the educational cost sharing grant, which goes directly to the town and as part of the town revenue. So that is something that, as the finance committee was discussing, we think it's very important to share that information, um, with town officials. In the past, that adjustment is minimal. You know, it could be twenty to fifty thousand dollars plus or minus each year. Um, and I honestly can't tell you right now what that adjustment could be like, because I don't know what our final expenses will be. But the reason why I talk about that is if you look at any potential savings on transportation or special education tuitions, because those students are already past that four and a half times the per pupil expenditure, and we're getting reimbursement from the state on that, it's not a dollar-for-dollar savings to our budget. It's really about a twenty-five cents on a dollar savings to our budget because the, the state is already reimbursing us for everything over that excess, except for the cap they put every year on that grant. So the cap this year was sitting at around seventy-five percent. So that's why I'm saying every dollar savings for those higher, higher-cost students is really going to be twenty-five cents on a dollar. But on the back end of that, there may be an adjustment to the educational cost sharing grant. We also, as Mr. Cullen talked about, the compensatory services, we may be required to, um, spend on these students over the course of the next year. The discussion at the committee level was, knowing that we're currently at an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar projected surplus, knowing that that number should increase, um, I wouldn't be surprised if we're at a million or potentially a one point two million dollar number by the time we close out the end of the school year. Um, the recommendation of the committee is to look at a couple of things in reallocation. For example, maybe buying the textbooks that we had budgeted in the twenty twenty-one year and buy that with the supply money we have now. But really, our recommendation would be to put any surplus in, request that go into the non-losting account um, for a variety of reasons. Um, one being to help cover the compensatory services, two, to look at some of the projects that obviously will get cut out of next year's budget due to the anticipated budget reduction we're looking at. And, um, and three, you know, there may be some discussion about, you know, what that dollar amount hit could be to the educational cost sharing grant. So I think we have to look at all three of those things as we're moving forward.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Thank you, Sheri.
If you know, please.
Mrs. Carmody?
Yes.
May I, may I follow that up, please?
Of course.
Thank you. I, I do want to comment on the transportation issue because I was surprised by the article in the Record Journal regarding a neighbor district, Wallingford, and this is public information. Basically, Wallingford said they were not, they were going to save all this money because they weren't paying the transportation contract from the time they went out of school, all the way through the end of the school year. Now, I can't comment on why they said that or what the rationale is. What I will tell you is that's not what the governor's executive order seven R said. It's not what it said. When this first happened, before the executive order was issued, we sat down, we immediately issued a letter to New Britain Transportation in conjunction with our legal counsel, Shipman and Goodwin, saying we have some rights under the contract and we're, you know, we're not going to be paying going forward. And the same thing, we also immediately looked at who we could continue to employ and who we couldn't. And we did issue some layoffs, if you will. We told folks we couldn't. As soon as the executive order came out, again, in consultation with our representatives from Shipman and Goodwin, we reversed that and Sheri has been in negotiations with New Britain Transportation since then, quite frankly. At, Shipman and Goodwin is doing this, uh, they just told us recently for about forty districts. So we're actually getting, um, a nice discount on the rate because they're, they're doing this work for a whole group of districts and, and we're only paying, you know, a piece, our, our piece of that, unique to our contract. So the other thing that we did was we immediately issued letters to re-employ people. We are following the executive order, not only in spirit, but to the letter as interpreted by our legal counsel and the State Department of Education and the counsel for the governor's office. So I'm going to tell you right now, that savings that was cited in the paper, I just don't understand it. Well, they said three point three million and two million of it is in transportation. I do not believe that two million dollars is going to be there, but that's their problem, that's not, that's not our problem. As Sheri said, we thought if we did not have to pay for transportation the remainder of the year, it would be about a one point two million dollar, uh, savings or an unexpected, unexpendited balance in that account. That's simply not going to be the case. Complying with the executive order puts us in line to receive benefits under the Federal Cares Act. Now, there's certain dollars that I believe for us, uh, I believe the state was going to release that information today. The state of Connecticut is going to get about a hundred and eleven million dollars under the Cares Act and districts are going to be receiving a proportion of what their Title One grant is. So we're going to be receiving some money under the Cares Act. All right, that's a certain amount of money. The other thing is, if you're not complying with the Federal Cares Act, you are not eligible, my understanding, and again, it's what our legal counselors told us, you will not be eligible for reimbursement. So as far as doing what's right for our community, you know, we view it as one community. And as I said, you know, living here for forty years, the, the dollars only come from one place. You know, it doesn't matter to me whether they are services on the town government side or on the, or on the school side. The dollars all come from us primarily. We get very few dollars from the federal government, very few dollars from the, from the state, quite frankly. What's, what's in the best interest of, of our community is what we're going to do. And following the governor, the governor's executive order, A, is what we have to do legally, and B, it's in the best interest of our community and it's going to put us in a position where if it's the health department, if it's the highway department, whoever it is, have, have dollars and we're all tracking those, those expenditures, those are all going to be eligible for reimbursement. We have been told, if you do not comply with the Federal Cares Act, you will not be eligible for that reimbursement because that's coming from the federal government. So all of a sudden, this article comes out, I'm getting a little annoyed, quite frankly, because all of a sudden, the article comes out and people are saying, how come Suddington can't save that kind of money? Well, I'm going to tell you right now, I don't think that other district is going to save that kind of money. So we're going to do the right thing. We're going to continue to comply with the executive order of the governor. We've been working hand in hand with the State Department of Education and more importantly, with Shipman and Goodwin, who would be the ones to defend us, we needed defending. So that's, that's, that's essentially where we are. Is there going to be some savings from that? Yeah, there, there will be. And if we're in the eighty, eighty-five, eighty-six percent range of having to pay the contract, you, you can, you can estimate what the savings are proportionally. Uh, again, and that, that savings was one point two million dollars, right? If the contract, if we end up settling for, uh, you know, nine, ninety percent would mean that's about a hundred and, um, twenty thousand dollars, you know? So if it's less than, if it's eighty-five percent, it's more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That, that's, that's how it works. So we're going to do our best to answer those, answer those questions. But I wanted to say it publicly because people automatically assume that perhaps we're doing the wrong thing, when actually we are doing absolutely the right thing and we're following what we're supposed to be doing based on what the governor's executive order says, based on what the State Department of Education says, and based on the advice of our legal counsel. Thank you.
So that, that message will be certainly relayed to the public because of phone calls and stuff Sheri that you're aware of, right? And emails that we received, correct? Okay, thank you.
And I will be doing that and I'll be, I will be putting that in a memorandum in a, in a more concise fashion.
That's excellent, because I think even before that article came out, people were talking about how much money we were going to save. And when Sheri was, at the committee meeting, I was enlightened, I mean, all this, the, the executive order, the compensatory service, the, it's not what everybody thinks. I mean, there's this windfall forward, it's not going to be there.
It's not going to happen. In addition to that, Zaya, quite honestly, I think the compensatory education dollars are going to be pretty significant.
Yeah, yeah. That's why, I mean, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of taking those funds and getting them into the, that, uh, that account so that we can use them for the educational purposes that we, we're going to need them.
Right.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay. Are any other, uh, questions on our finance committee report? Which then brings us to our personnel.
Sheri?
Yes?
I, Tim, can you hear me?
Yes, Bob.
I just wanted to thank Tim, I just wanted to thank Tim, Sheri and Zaya for that explanation because I have received phone calls about it and
Me too, right.
I mean, based on what the public knows, which is not obviously always accurate.
Thank you.
So we don't get any more of the phone calls and the public understands it, so thank, thank you very much for that. Any one else before I get to the personnel report?
Well, there's just two last little items to, to cover. I want to make sure we made them public. They were under miscellaneous. And it was for the YMCA program, no, the YMCA lease program, this is pretty still
Forgot that.
Pretty obvious. The payment is supposed to cover custodial costs while the program Pretty obvious. The payment is supposed to cover custodial costs while the program is in place. It's not a revenue generator, just supposed to cover costs. And because the school year closure, it's just right to prorate those lease payments for the Y. And in relation to that, the committee felt it was right to also refund or credit, provide credit or refunds to the parents whose children are at our preschool, same reason, because of the school closure. So I just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay. Okay, Zay, I'm sorry. Anything else, Zay?
Nope. That's it.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Personnel Report. May I have a motion?
Move to approve. Personnel report is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
No opposition, correct? Next on the agenda is Town Government Communication. I have one question for Mr. Cannello.
Yes, sir.
I forgot the date. Next week, maybe? Is it the Town Council, or is it May that they have their final? Is it May?
I, I believe the, the hearing on the budget is Monday.
Yeah. Are they still going to have a hearing on that?
Yes, yes.
And that's going to be done like this, right?
I believe they will use something of this fashion, correct? I don't know exactly.
Okay.
Okay. But the date and time is Monday, April 27th. That 7 o'clock was for the original date and time.
Thank you, Sherry.
But you have not heard, so it still is on, and you, and they will probably do it like this, or?
Yes, in a similar fashion. It will be some, some form of digital communication, electronic communication, yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on Town Government Communication or comments? Tim?
I have one, and that is, you probably saw the press release from Ms. Triano, so about the referendum. And originally, there was a referendum, referendum scheduled for the library in the fall of 2020. And then our school projects, whatever those will be, would, would have been in the fall of 2021. Given the circumstances, the Town Council really felt those should both be moved back. And I had a conversation with our town manager, Mr. Shoda, about that. The referendum that would have been in school projects, of course, included, or this next referendum also included the high school roof. So we're tracking that. Mr. Romano felt we would still be okay moving forward, but that is, that is an impact in not having those referenda in the originally scheduled positions. So it does, it does put off the school project referendum until November of 2021. But I do still think, and that was the Town Government Communication part of that, I still think that now that we're, we're able to begin to communicate in this fashion, that we should convene that committee to begin having some of those discussions. We, it gives the, the board a little bit more time, but I think we should, we should move forward, even if we do so in, you know, a less-than-ideal set of circumstances. So, Mrs. Clark, I'll be in contact with you about trying to move those, trying to move that committee forward.
That would be fine.
Any questions on that? Thank you. Next is the Leonard and Gladys Joel Scholarship recipient, the committee of Mr. Darrenowski, Mr. Falbo, and I forgot. There was a third one. Who was it? Missy.
Missy.
Missy, Missy.
Missy.
So we need a motion to accept the
Move that the Board of Education approve the, one messed up here, approve the recipient recommended by Leonard, Leonard Joel and the Gladys Joel Scholarship Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And you know, speaking of that, Mr. Cannello, and that would be a, and Mr. Pepe, that will be another
Yes.
thing for us to work out, you know, scholarship night and awards night, and I'm sure, Mr. Pepe, I don't see him.
He's, he's here.
Really?
No, he's still here. He's just, he just set the camera. Yes, Mrs. Carmody, and that's, that, yeah, and that goes back, yeah, and that goes back to, I mean, many of you have attended these over the years. We have such an excellent staff for organizing all these things, and they've done it year after year after year. There, it's, it's a talented group at the high school, and those are the folks that we'll, we'll rely on, find ways to do this for students. Because not only do we have the scholarship night, we also have awards night.
Right, exactly.
And a variety, and a variety of other things. So those are, those are not standalones, they're all interrelated. And the, the group, as I said, at the, at the high school, it's amazing. I mean, you've all witnessed it in the past. When you, when you attend these events, they literally, not to shout, not to sound cliché, they literally run like clockwork. They just are so, so well-run. And that, and that's because these folks have done it for many years. They're very professional. They're used to doing it. They know what the pitfalls are. That's why I say, the professional staff at the high school, we're going to rely heavily on, on their expertise and their, their ability now to pivot and, and do some of these things in a different fashion.
Well, it's just, it's just, you know, the times are just so different. I mean, how do we get the scholarship out to the kids? And, but I'm sure it'll all fall into place. So thank you for explaining that. Next on the agenda is the adoption of our Board of Education meeting dates. And you all had a chance to look that over. Do I have a motion?
Move to, move to propose that the Board of Education meeting dates for 2021 be approved as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And the last item is Southern High School graduation. And we've talked a lot about that, and I don't know if Mr. Cannello wants to speak to it, but obviously, we cannot set a date until we get the word from the governor, the health director, Tim. I guess you have to wait for all of that, right, before we can say anything, correct?
Yeah. This is, this is on the agenda. Usually, the board sets the date.
Right, in April, right.
And so that's, that's why it's on the agenda again, because it's a, it's an April agenda item. But I think we, you know, we talked extensively about it earlier in the meeting. I, I really don't think that the board can set a, a date right now. You know, the 181st day of school is June 16th. And I, I think moving forward, if we do something on June 16th and something later, or if we just defer and do something later, all, those are, those are a lot of the options that, you know, we're talking about right now.
Right.
I did just have the ability to peek in on a string of emails. The Hartford Area Superintendent's Association was at, the members, the Hartford Area Superintendent's Association were asked the question, you know, what are you doing? Are you doing something digital? Are you doing something in person only with appropriate physical distance? It's physical distance. I hate calling it social distancing, by the way. We're trying to be social at an appropriate physical distance. The, and it's mixed. The responses right now are mixed. And folks are, every, just about everyone are still in the, in the planning stages. My friend Tom Moore, who's the superintendent in West Hartford, he's got two high schools, and they're thinking about a mixture of, of virtual and in, and in-person, and doing the in-person, you know, later in the year with the appropriate distances, et cetera. And they do their graduations like we do our graduations outside on, on the fields. So it, it's really a mixed bag right now, and I don't think that there is a simple solution. But I don't think that, I don't think it would be a good idea for the board to try to set a date now. I do, I do think we'll come back to it. I mean, I agree with Mr. Darrenowski. We can, we can put this on the, well, there's two things. There's the distance learning, but this can come back at both of the May, both of the May meetings. I think that's, you know, appropriate. And I'm, I'm really hoping that we continue to get information from the state, and, and we have been. And it literally has been changing. You know, it's, it's literally been changing from day to day, week to week. So we'll, we'll continue to have that information, and we'll continue to rely on, on Shane Lockwood, really, who's been fabulous with this, as I said earlier. So we'll, we'll continue to, we'll continue to move that forward. And I know that we'll have a good solution, and Trevor will work with all of the students, and we'll, we'll do the very, very best that we, you know, that we can.
And we certainly have to thank our administration, both Tim and Steve, for keeping us, and it does change today, today, and you have done a wonderful job of keeping all of us, parents and students and the public, informed of all of the different changes. Before we end, Mr. Cannello, did you get any emails that you wanted to share, or nothing came in?
For public comment, I will check again. I have not had any emails asking to be part of public comment.
Oh, okay. All right. So that, I believe, I need a motion.
Mr. Darrenowski has his hand up.
I know. I see him. Go ahead, Mr. Darrenowski.
On the issue of the high school graduation,
Yes.
I think it might be appropriate to initiate a motion to table to the next board meeting, and we can review it at that point.
Fine. We all want to agree with that?
Well, I'll move to table this agenda item for the next board meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And I'm waiting for our favorite motion, and who wants to do it?
Move to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
I thought it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think we all did a very, very good job tonight getting on. It was not, not bad at all, really. It went very well.
Great technology.
We know why we have technology, so I thank you. Bob, are you waving your hand, or do you have something to say?
No. Stay safe, everybody.
He's just waving bye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night, everybody.
Stay well. Everyone, please stay well, okay?
Mrs. Carmody, Mrs. Carmody, very nice job. You did a, you did a very, very nice job.